That got paid but was reduced amount. It didn't get paid at the amount, you guys had them.
I think I left my jacket in the other room.
Twelve thousand last.
Did you bring a jacket?
No. Yeah.
He also left my coat.
He got that back. He was made whole on that, but not on the other. That went another twelve.
Get it during the town manager's.
And second.
Yeah, it take a lot.
It is now seven thirty. So please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I didn't even notice that. Thank you, sir. I start on time and Anne's not here.
Wait for it.
No.
Oh.
You're kind of happy.
Kind of the most important person in the room.
Yep.
Always.
Great.
She's admiring the beautiful centerpiece we all got. Funny how that works.
Now you can tell.
Can't. I need Anne.
Well, actually Ted didn't. I won't tell you.
I would have gone. Mr. George did notice.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have a shoe. On behalf of the Bryant family, I'd like to share our condolences. On behalf of David A. Bryant upon his passing on December tenth, twenty eighteen. Mr. Bryant served the United States Navy during the Vietnam War. On behalf of his family and others, families of others who have passed, like to have a moment Thank you for that. A reminder that we are being recorded, videotaped, going out live, and you can also tune in to watch us anytime you want for the future of mankind. No announcement for the president. Ooh, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December twenty-four.
Seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. No one else mentioned from the president at this time, no proclamations at this time. We move to citizens' open forum. If there are any citizens here, they can come on up, state their name, address. Seeing none, moving on.
Motion to appoint Mr. Costa to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Motion made. And seconded. Any discussion on Mr. Costa?
I'd just like to thank him for stepping forward. It's an important board at this point in time, and it has been understaffed, so this will be very helpful.
Mr. George, anything to add?
No, nothing.
Okay. Those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Costa to the zoning board of appeals? Aye.
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 As opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Costa. Now at seven thirty-five, we'd like to open the hearing for petition P two zero one eight for approval of license transactions of alcohol license for the NIP LLC. Is the petition present? Yes, he is.
Yes.
Forgive me for not looking up sooner.
Thank you. Brian Hughes on behalf of the NIP LLC.
Hello to you, sir. How are you this evening?
Well, how are you?
Very good.
Good evening, everybody. There are two matters regarding the NIP before the council tonight. I'm not sure which one you would prefer to start with. There's the change of liquor license manager and there's an ownership change.
There's no order to the hearing that I remember seeing, so I suppose we can at least leave it up to whatever you'd like to start with.
This is change of manager beneficial interest transfer of stock.
Yes. So starting with the change of manager, since that's boots on the ground. The current liquor license manager is Ms. Rosina Torres. She is no longer going to be managing the hotel. She's been moved to a, transferred to another hotel by the parent companies in South Boston. So we're applying to have Mr. Wayne Reed, who is here in the room with us tonight, to be appointed in her stead as the liquor license manager. He is the general manager of the hotel. He's been the general manager of various hotels since at least two thousand six. He's a lot of experience with, you know, managing hotels is obviously a great responsibility. He's never been a liquor license manager before, but when he's in charge of hundreds of people under his roof, I believe that's, you know, and he's been doing so for so long. That shows he is responsible and capable of handling amounts to a seven-seat bar. He is certified in all matters pertaining to liquor license, and he's here to answer any questions if counsel has any.
Seems to me everything's in order.
Yes, a whole packet. So two of the only ones here, there's no, still have to go through the general questions from the public. Seeing none. Public speaking in favor? None to speak in favor. No offense to you folks, they're just not here. Nobody's speaking in opposition either, so any other questions or from the council at Since this is a multi-part hearing, do I have to close each or just keep going with the other items? Okay, other item?
I would suggest that if it pleases the council that this be voted on separately because they'll go before the A, B, C, C separately. It's two different applications.
Yeah, you can, you can do it.
Sure.
So this is on change of manager?
Yes.
All right, so are you closing the hearing on change of manager?
I am closing the hearing after that, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager relative to petition two zero one eight zero two one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Do we do have a discussion for hearings? Okay, so. It is a voice vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Continuing the hearing on beneficial interest and transfer?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to continue the hearing on the beneficial interest and transfer?
Yes.
With regard to the application to change beneficial interest, the current owner of the limited liability company, the NIP LLC, is Ms. Lillian Carney. She is one of the principals of the, what's known as the Claremont Companies, a longtime business in Bridgewater, have lots of interests, but she's no longer interested in owning restaurants anymore. She's also the owner of another restaurant in one of the hotels owned by the Claremont Companies. So the, the proposed those to have her interest in the limited liability company, transfer to Claremont Food and Beverage LLC, which is another of the Claremont Companies, so to speak. It's acting as a parent company. It already controls another limited liability company that owns a liquor license out of Needham. Essentially, we're going from individual owning the company that owns the license to a more corporate structure that fits into the Claremont Companies way of business. You know, it's a very large organization, so we're trying to corral it so there's more parametal structure. We're going to have Claremont Food and Beverage LLC on top, and it's going to own the other LLCs that control the individual liquor licenses. Needham, the Needham Food and Beverage is one now. This one would be second, is actually another license that's already pending petition in Brookline also. The A, B, C, C has already approved the first ownership in, the ownership structure in Needham, and we just ask that the transfer be approved so we can bring this other license into the fold, and Ms. Carney can be relieved of her responsibilities and transfer the interest.
Thank you for that. So we go back to the general public. Any questions from the public in that regard? Seeing none. Public speaking in favor? There will be approaching, public speaking in opposition. Not seeing any council discussion or questions from the council? Seeing none. Close this portion of the hearing at seven forty-one.
Motion to approve petition P two zero one eight zero two one as to beneficial interest transfer of stock, as requested.
Made and seconded. Go for a voice vote on that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And then just to close the record out, because I know attorneys are kind of.
Particular?
Particular, yes. That's a good word.
Same times.
That's, that's a good word. Can I make a motion to approve petition P two zero one eight zero two one as a whole? We've approved both parts, so I'd just make it as a whole.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Shall we vote on that as well? Yes, let's vote with those in favor of.
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we're closed out as a whole.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now moving to hearing number two. Seven forty-two. And this is a license revocation hearing for Patterson's Incorporated Doing Business as Skips Liquors at ninety-eight through one hundred Plymouth Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Town council is opening the public meeting on whether or not a violation of the license, seize license occurred, and if a violation occurred, what the penalty will be upon revocation of the license issued to Patterson's Inc., DBA Skips Liquors for premises located ninety-eight through one hundred Plymouth Street, Bridgewater. The reason for the hearing is state dissolution of the license holder's entity. So we have opened that hearing, and Mr. Patel I see is here. Please head on up to the podium and explain yourself, where you stand at this point.
Good evening. After the last meeting, I addressed this to my accountant, and on a December seventh, the corporation has been reinstated by Secretary of State, and I have a copy of it. Would you like to see?
Dennis, would you like to read it out loud? Mr. Gallagher.
I could, I could. This is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I hereby certify that upon examination of this document duly submitted to me, it appears that the provisions of general laws relative to the corporations have been complied with, and hereby approve said articles, and the filing fee having been paid, and said articles are deemed to have been filed with us December seventh, two thousand and eighteen. William Francis Galvin, Secretary of State.
Are we open to questions?
Well, he stated it. Yes. So let's discuss or open to questions.
So do you have your certificate of good standing for taxes as well?
Good standing for which taxes?
The tax certificate? So in the filing at the, because all the paperwork was faxed on the eighth, and all the certification paperwork is up on the Commonwealth on the eighth, you had requested to get, to have a, I think it's the, Mr. Chase will help me out.
It would be a tax good standing certificate from the Department of Revenue?
Right. So we never did the business under this corporation, as everybody knows, it's fairly open. So we do not have, and neither we have sold any cigarettes or collected any tax.
No, but I mean, there's a request in the paperwork to have that sent to your address.
Correct. I have not received it.
But you're expecting it. Okay, ask a couple more questions? So you filed for four years. So basically you created the corporation in two thousand and twelve.
That is correct.
With a partner at the time, and then two thousand thirteen through seventeen, four years were submitted on that Friday after our meeting. So is that, is that the, your tax guy just missed it?
Because he, he was aware of that there is no business open, so there is no filing at that point.
But you still had a corporation that needed an annual report filed.
Which he probably missed it, or he never mentioned about it, but it has been corrected.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. President, sorry. If I may, I, Mr. Patel, good evening. I did have an opportunity to look online at the Secretary of the Commonwealth's database, and I did see that in fact, your corporation was revived on that date, and that is the paperwork that you've now circulated for our review. I think that the, the question the counselor would raise with respect to the certificate of good standing from the Department of Revenue is something that will follow in due course, and it might be advisable if you could make a copy of that available to us when you do receive it. In my opinion, you, there'd be no particular need for you to appear, but if you could perhaps direct it to the town manager, just so that we have that to kind of close the record on it. What I understand is that the Secretary of the Commonwealth in, in more recent years has, you know, given a degree of latitude to applicants for revival such as yourself because it's well understood that the Department of Revenue might take some period of time for issuance of a good standing. So that's the reason that they allow you to submit as you have and file that letter of undertaking that represents your intention to secure the certificate of tax good standing. So in my understanding, my impression, the corporate status has been cured, it's remedied, and your corporation is today in good standing.
Thank you.
Other questions? None. Okay. Closing statement?
I went today morning to acquire my business certificate from the zoning officer, Steve Solari, and we applied as a Telson's Inc. Doing Business as Skips Liquor. He refused to give the business certificate and mention, so when I asked him why, so he mentioned, DBA name is only for sole proprietor and not for corporation, which is he was incorrect. I did not wanted to argue with him, and the corporation can also have Doing Business as name, which he asked me to provide attorney's paperwork, which I, I'm not going to, you know, if he does not want it to give it to me, there is nothing I can do. If he has to find out the laws, then he has to find out. But I'm entitled for that business certificate. I have applied for it. He refused to give it to me.
I, I don't believe those remarks are necessarily relevant to the hearing we have in front of us.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
So Mr. Fitzgibbon makes a point that that's not relevant to the course of the hearing, but thank you all the same. No more questions. We've had the closing, so at seven forty-nine, we can close the hearing. Are there any additional comments from the counselors at this stage?
I, I will. So I know there's a lot of latitude, and maybe it's an oversight in paperwork, but I'm still stuck on the fact that for several months of operation, you actually didn't have an active corporation while you were selling liquor in the town, and maybe it's a simple accounting error, but you know, that if, if other larger companies or any companies did that, you know, you know, we have a health facility open, and suddenly we find out they're not licensed to do practice medicine, but we allowed it for a couple months, you know, would that be okay? I don't think so. So I don't, I don't know what the, if there's any remedy that we need to take or what it would be. I'm not here to recommend that, but I'm still troubled by the fact that for all the time that we've spent here talking about this particular establishment, that this to me seems still like a sizable gap. How are we going to not have this issue in the future?
Other comments? Do you have some? Okay. So now we've time to. Motion.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Well, it's been closed.
Actually, it's been closed.
Close that, whether or not there's a violation.
Well, I think we should, pardon me, I'm doing a, Mr. Sousa, I was leaning back in my chair, not speaking right into the microphone as you've been accused of. I think we need to make a motion to do something. So I'll, I'll just start it out by making a motion to find that a violation has occurred and that in fact, there was no corporation selling alcohol as we were led to believe for several months, and then I'm prepared to make another motion to take no action other than to note it going forward.
I'll second Mr. Fitzgibbon's motion.
Okay, so a motion was made that there was a violation. And no action will be taken. You can do that in the same motion.
Well, no, I'll make it as a separate motion.
Thank you. So motion made and seconded.
About a violation occurring.
Okay.
You'd want discussion.
There was a violation, so any discussion on that? Thank you, Mr. Wood.
The only discussion I had is, as I said before, I backed the motion, what people do, because it's obviously an absence of paperwork. Whether, whether, you know, it affected the business or, or the operations is, is, you know, be seen, but it is definitely a gap that is required in the licensing, so I hope there's support for the motion.
Anyone else? Okay, so those in favor of the motion?
Is this roll call or?
Voice.
Voice, okay, thank you.
We're good with voice?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, just to repeat, it's a, a warning.
To find a violation.
Rather, to find a violation because there was a gap and that there was no cooperation for that time. Those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
Mr. President, I'd like to note that I'm abstaining from the vote.
Mr. President, I don't, I think under our rules that counselors cannot abstain. They can recuse themselves, but they can't abstain from the vote.
And I recuse, recuse myself from the vote.
You are recused, Mr. Collos.
Thank you.
And then I'll make a motion to take no action relative to the violation.
Second. There's a motion made and seconded to take no action. Discussion on that? Hearing none, seeing none. That can be a voice vote as well. So those in favor of that motion? Aye. Those against?
And again, I recuse myself from that.
You are recused, Mr. Collos. All right, so that issue's closed. Thank you. Okay, so item G. License transactions. Man, I'd love to go through all of A through, A through J, and one fell swoop, but.
Can't.
Motion to approve petition P two zero one eight zero two two?
Second.
Motion made to approve twenty oh two two, made and seconded. Discussion?
Bill's tax has been serving Bridgewater well for many, many years. I hope it continues to serve Bridgewater well for many, many years.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Petition P two eighteen oh twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Brazil's been doing a hobby for a long time and trying to make a couple bucks at it, so we should support him.
Excellent. Anyone else? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Petition two eight, two zero one eight oh twenty-four, on second hand. Gold dealers.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Just a quick question to the town manager. Our twenty-one day bylaw ordinance is still in effect around making sure that it's not stolen and sold, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Petition two eighteen oh twenty-five, annual entertainment. This is the large.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion made and approved. Any discussion?
Great organization. Love to see them keep going.
I was gonna say, if anyone votes against Music Alley, it would be a bad idea.
Yeah. It's, it's a great experience to be a part of it, and it's a great experience to experience it. Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, moving to. Two eighteen oh twenty-six. Thank you, sir. Oh, twenty-six for auto amusements.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Any comments, Mr. George, Ms. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Is, is the cave still open?
That was actually a good question. I don't know.
Well, I hope, I hope it is.
Town manager says yes.
Okay, great.
Good, good for them. I'll have to get over there. Those in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Thank you on that. Now we're moving to oh twenty. Where's the number? Oh, twenty-seven. There it is up top. Or the licensing of lodging houses. Motion to approve made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. George. Mr. George, discussion?
Just to the town manager, there's been no complaints, issues, et cetera, with any of these lodging houses in the last year.
That is correct.
That is nice to hear.
I'd like to say that the iron fence is nicely decorated for the holidays. It's good to see. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving to P two twenty eighteen oh twenty eight for licensing of common victory license establishments.
To approve. Second.
Mr. President, I have two amendments to this, if I could.
You may.
On number twenty seven, Fifty Nine Broad Street LLC, also known as Bruno's Pizzeria. We don't license anything past 2:00 AM. So I would ask the council to amend the 4:00 AM closing to 2:00 AM.
Which number was that? I'm sorry.
Number twenty seven.
Got it. Thank you.
And then number forty four. Simple one, the Sunday hours should read 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, not 9:00 PM. So 8:00 PM, 12 to 8 is what they've requested.
Motion to amend is indicated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Discussion.
Discussion on the amendments.
So I don't believe Bruno's has ever been open that late. I may be wrong. But Bruno's doesn't sell any alcohol that I'm aware of. Is that correct? I'm wondering why we would limit the business to earlier hours. I understand the limit on the liquor establishments, but this is just a place that wants to sell pizza, et cetera.
I think the best answer to that is our police chief has been fairly consistent that he'd ask not to have things open past 2:00. And my second, more complex answer would be, I do think it's probably time for the council to have a discussion about hours generally and what we are willing to permit and what we're not willing to permit as the licensing authority.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that was for the amendment?
Yep.
This is for the adoption of the, all the establishments.
To approve.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded.
Sorry, it's been made and seconded.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, it's been made and seconded. We had an amendment.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thank you. So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? P twenty eighteen oh twenty nine for class one, class two, class three auto dealers.
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion on either one? Hearing seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving to P twenty eighteen oh thirty, licensing of establishments with alcohol and attendant licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I do have one question. For number eleven. Angel D'Amelio, DBA thirty five Central Square Restaurant. The license will not be issued. Has the license ever been issued?
Not that I'm aware of.
So just for my own edification, maybe others, how long is there a statute of limitations on someone having a license, but it never being issued?
I don't believe, don't believe there's any statute of limitations on that.
It's not a specific time period, but it's up to you.
It would be up to us.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Colvatos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, I've asked this question before. This legislation would approve thirteen licenses. How many do we have available to issue?
We have for restaurants.
Under the restaurant class, yeah.
In the restaurant class, we have twenty eight available for all alcohol. And we have six for wine and malt. That's in the restaurant category.
Okay, given that, that we're not, I mean, I know in a lot of towns and cities, they're, it's hard to get an alcohol license for a restaurant, but apparently not here. So if that weren't the case, I might wonder why we're awarding one that's not being issued. But it seems like a moot point at this point.
Mr. Wood?
So hopefully a related question. Bear with me. So if there's thirteen and we're allowed to have, would you say twenty eight?
Right.
Are we doing anything to attract other restaurants that would have full alcohol and food?
We're doing quite a bit. Council has changed zoning down, well, I could go on and on, but yes, we've, we've made, tried to make it as an attractive proposition as possible. Commercial, try, any additional commercial space, we're encouraging as restaurant space, opportunity zone, where we're trying to market that as, as not just residential, but also commercial skewed towards service businesses such as restaurants. I think Mr., excuse me, Mr. Pascal's Development is proposing restaurant space. So there's, our efforts underway to try to boost that number. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher.
I'm on set. Thank you.
Just if we have to, since number twelve, the manager's been updated per our previous hearing. Do we want to update it to what it should be?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend.
I think that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Thanks. I'm gonna make a motion to update number twelve with the correct manager's name, which was.
Oh.
A lovely gentleman. Who came and was sitting here.
Motion is being formulated.
Brian Hughes.
Oh, that was the attorney.
That was a different.
Oh, that was the attorney. Hold on.
Yo, give it to the attorney.
Don't make it.
That'll just ruin the place.
So update number twelve to Reed as Wayne Reed in replacement of Rosinas Torres as the manager.
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion, seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
On the main motion, I still have a question. Go ahead.
Question on the main motion?
Yeah, question on the main motion. So now under retail package stores, since we're, we just had the hearing on skips, the renewal, the renewal was for skips, right? Not seaside liquors?
Right. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just a similar follow up to Mr. Woods and Ms. Loshes. We have Telson's Inc. DBA skips liquors. And I believe he's got a different LLC or whatever, and he indicated in his comments that there was some dispute with the building official about that. I just don't want to have a problem come up with any violations being found because we approved it as Telson's versus something else.
So these, these license renewals are the names that are given us directly by the ABCC. So any alteration or changes would have to be generated by the petitioner who would come in and look for a change in ownership, change in manager, changes so forth. So.
Much like earlier.
Much like you heard earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the main motion to?
Just one last question.
Sure.
Sorry. Are there any other issues similar to what we heard tonight with any of these other establishments?
No.
You're nowhere.
No. Any others? Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to approve this with, well, we've already gone through the amendment. So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As opposed? Moving to. This oh thirty one. Change of hours for a package store license sees twenty eighteen dash oh thirty one.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. George. Discussion?
I just, I'd just like to say that, you know, we do have indication from the ABCC that under MGL, they have as of right to open at 10:00 AM on Sunday. So there's no, there's no status we can take other than that. But to thank the applicant for coming in advising us that that's what he wants to do.
Mr. Wood, did you?
Yeah. So this is the, so there was, so if you look in the middle of the second paragraph on the second page, licensees should use this form to notify the local licensing authority of the change in hours and attach a corporate vote authorizing the change. Mr. Dutton, if I may through you, do you have a copy of the corporate vote that requested this?
I believe we do have it. I don't have it right on me, but I do believe we do have that.
Enough?
Good enough.
Okay, other discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As opposed? Thank you. Moving on to presentations, seeing no presentations. Town, town managers report and time for nesting as coat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a number of items this evening, but I'll plow through them fairly quickly. We did have a neighborhood meeting for the Elm Street area last week. It was held here in the council chambers to update the neighbors on the progress of our Elm Street reconstruction project. Roughly twenty residents and business owners attended. So that was pretty good turnout. Tim McIntosh, our engineer from VHB, was there and he went through the plans and outlined the timelines and answered a lot of great questions. So we'll continue to interact with the, excuse me, the neighbors on that reconstruction project because it will be, and they understand that it'll be quite a disruption next spring through the summer into the fall. So they're, they're on board with it, obviously, but did, did ask a lot of good questions. The Nature Conservancy on behalf of the town and a whole bunch of other parties, including Mass Division of Ecological Restoration, Division of Marine Fisheries, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, NOAA, Narragansett Bay Estuary Program, and so on and so on, has issued an RFP for some of the preliminary design work for a potential dam removal and bridge replacement of the High Street Dam and High Street Bridge. This is obviously a long-term project, so this is the very beginning of that. But we're uncertain at this point what, what the results will be of, of the work that will, that they're issuing the RFP for. But what we're trying to do is position ourselves for almost any eventuality, but obviously the most dramatic being the removal of the dam and the rebuilding of the bridge. So we're trying to take a very proactive approach at this point. And thankfully, we've got a whole bunch of, of different parties contributing funding to, to help us take a proactive approach to ensure that we have as many different options available to us as possible when, when the decision is, is made whether or not to remove that dam. So that's, that's really what's triggering, triggering all of this activity at this stage. So that will progress. As I say, it'll be a multi-year endeavor. So obviously, we'll, we'll keep the council posted as we go along in that regard. We had a great session here with the Boston Architectural College students last week. They were in town to present several student-designed options for the Town Commons Memorial Area, specifically the placement of the World War One Memorial Bronze Plaque and the creation of a more user-friendly monument garden. As you probably recall, this process was begun by Councilor Gallagher probably two years ago, at least. And it began as an effort.
Was that?
Almost three.
Four years, five years ago. But it began as an effort to, to get the monument cleaned up and then, and rotate it so it was facing north into the common so people could actually see it and appreciate it. We've since found out, obviously, that the monument couldn't be moved without running the risk of having it crumble. So we've left it in place. The bronze plaques were cleaned in place, but since then, we've been looking for alternatives. So I think the students gave us some great, great options. We'll be putting their finished product up on, online so people can see the different options. And we'll get the, the World War One Ad hoc Committee back together and try to make some, some final decisions in that regard. So that is in the works. But I certainly appreciate the BAC helping us with this. They, they also did a lot of work with Bridgewater State University History Department to really dig into the history behind the monuments, which, which was really nice to see. So using, good use of our, of our resources locally and also with Boston Architectural College. So I appreciate that. We got the McKellwain ZBA application this week from Capstone Communities and MPC Development. I can tell you, no surprises, but the ZBA, excuse me, will open their hearing on January twenty third. And we're also expecting DHCD to issue their site eligibility letter sometime early next month. They were onsite, they've been onsite quite a bit, and, and DHCD was here last week, toured the, the school and the, and the grounds, and were impressed with the, the project. And we're trying to make up for some lost time and hopeful that DHCD funding can come in the first round, which is what we're all trying for. Usually projects go through two rounds of applications before they get funded, but there's some optimism that DHCD is, is willing to fund this one in the first round. So I hope, hope that comes to pass. We're also continuing on with planning for memorial building upgrades. Architect has given us some preliminary cost estimates and, and we've begun to do some testing and surveying and other, other test work on the site in anticipation of finalizing a request to the CPC for some gap funding. We've got just shy of a million dollars, and it's going to cost a little more than a million dollars to actually do the right kind of work on that building. So, so we'll, we'll plan that out very well and, and go through the process on that one. One of the councilors mentioned last week or asked a question about South Street, and I guess there was some rumors going around about a ninety-house subdivision on South Street. That is not the case. There was, and there's nothing in the works that we know of. There was an approval, I believe, through the Conservation Commission on two or three houses on South Street, but, but certainly not a ninety-house subdivision. So I just kind of wanted to get that out there, make sure people knew. Mitchell School Building Committee has been working towards a February filing deadline with the MSBA. And the MS, we did file some, some preliminary design program paperwork with the MSBA. They've sent some of that back with some questions and asked some, asked us to flesh that out a little bit. The preferred schematic report is the next milestone, and our OPM is hoping that that can be filed on the twentieth of February. But that's going to require a lot of committee work prior to that submission. So, so that might be a little aggressive. But this particular submission coming up requires that we determine a preferred option for three or four different things. One is a repair of the building, one is an addition renovation, and another is simply a new building. So, so the committee's sort of narrowing down the scope in the different categories. And, and we'll forward the, the, those preferences in the schematic report, which we're hoping to file February twentieth. So, but I can say that, you know, after a lot of sort of preliminary work, the work is becoming more important, at least as it pertains to, to residents and, and the potential cost to do something with that building and with that school. So we'll be looking obviously very carefully at the respective costs associated with each of those options and, and reporting back to the council as that, that proceeds. Comprehensive Plan Committee had its first meeting with our consultant, Judy Barrett, and we went over mostly the planning process and the timeline that she anticipates. It's a pretty aggressive timeline, I think, for the work that's actually involved, but she's, looks to be very organized with this. So that's, that'll cut down a lot of the time commitments and the, and the work that the committee has to do. But we do have a great committee, and, and I think internally, we've got a great team ready to really get going on this. It's critically, this is, I've said this before, it's critically important to the town and to our future. And our plan at this point is not only to get a comprehensive plan together, but really the next tiny step is just do the implementation piece, and that'll make it a complete master plan. So we'll have a complete master plan update when this process is over. And at that point, and as we go through this process, we'll be informing some of the zoning decisions. decisions that are being made on the zoning rewrite. So that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Judy had said we're going to try to wrap up the work by November, December of 2019. I think that was it. So that's aggressive, but I think she's laid out, as I say, a great work plan to get us there. Branding and wayfinding work, so if anybody wants to mark a milestone, the first town meeting that we did Facebook Live was a branding and wayfinding public input session, and sadly, we had very little of the public present, but we did get a fair number of comments back after getting it out on Facebook. So the good side is, I think we did get some good productive feedback. The downside was that we didn't have really too many people on site for that. But we're sort of testing, testing our ability to do things a little differently and try to get public input along the way, so it was good. We're also getting our ducks in a row for a January 11th deadline to apply for feasibility grant funding through the Massachusetts Cultural Council for the Town Hall Building. As you recall, we applied last year, did not get it. I'm much more optimistic that we'll actually be able to get something this year. We're eligible for $50,000, I believe, and we'll be asking for that amount. So what we're looking to do is find feasibility funding to contemplate creating a cultural or community space in the Town Hall and how we would do that. So as I've told people, any support letters are certainly welcome, but we're going to reach out individually to the organizations and community groups to get letters of support for that. I won't delve into too much of the budget and finance stuff. I've mentioned before the capital plan, comprehensive capital plan is well underway, and Budget and Finance Committee, I know, has looked at that, at least done a first pass. The council, I think it'll be in front of the council in January, and at that point, you'll get a sort of a broad picture of at least what the needs are in town, and we've tried to make it as all-encompassing as possible. One of the things that won't be fleshed out, or actually, it may be fleshed out by the time it reaches the council, is the sidewalk and comprehensive sidewalk and street repair plan that we were hoping to get done by November, and due to some funding delays, won't be available until January. So that may cause some changes to the comprehensive capital plan, but we'll deal with that when that report comes in, but we're looking forward to that. And, oh, opportunity zone. We're spending a lot of time developing a plan to essentially market our opportunity zone, reaching out to investment bankers, money managers, banks, developers, business owners, to kind of highlight what the benefits of our particular opportunity zone is, opportunities are, and also to just very generally describe some of the tax benefits to the folks. Surprisingly, you'll find that banks, well, actually, most financial folks really don't have a good grasp of the opportunity zone tax benefits, so we're trying to do, not go overboard, but just do a basic education, get people interested in at least finding out more. So that is in the works. Just a reminder that winter, no on-street parking, our winter parking hours are in effect currently, so please don't park overnight on the streets. And as always, anybody interested in board or committee work, feel free to reach out to me or anybody in the office, and we will point you in the right direction. So that is what I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions for Mr. Gallagher?
My favorite subject, thank you, Mr. President. My favorite subject, and I'll ask probably three questions, on parking. I know we approved earlier tonight, it's not on the agenda, we approved the account, You had mentioned before that the revenue that you expect to receive in a full year of the parking program as it's currently being, you know, the three spots, the three different areas, it'd be about $150,000 to $200,000 in revenues, that's net to the town after expenses.
Correct.
How, so if I park in one of these spots and pay $2 for two hours, how much of that $2 comes to the town? And how much of that is the fee to the company that we hired?
So that's a great question. We didn't, we didn't do, you know, a percentage deal. We did a flat fee deal so that we pay for all of the parking management, I believe it's $70,000 for the first year, all to be paid out of the total revenue. So if our total revenues are 250, then we'd net out, you know, $180,000.
Okay, so and the maintenance of the kiosk itself would be by the company?
Correct.
So they won't be policing the cars that go over the two-hour limit?
No, we continue to maintain the policing of the parking, but we also, I'm sorry.
No, if somebody violates and goes over the two hours and is still there, and there's a ticket given, where does that money go?
That still, that comes to us. This is, it always has.
Not part of the parking revenue, though. It's part of, who issues the ticket? The police officer in town?
Correct.
And that'll go towards the pot if someone were off-street parking when they shouldn't be, right? It wouldn't go into the fund that we created tonight or proved tonight that we'll approve later on, right?
Correct. Correct.
So it will not come to the parking program. It'll go towards the general revenue as any other parking violation in the town, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's it. I'm tired.
Mr. Wood.
Actually, related question. So are these just daytime meters or what are the hours of operation?
I believe the hours of operation, 7 o'clock to 8:00 PM, I believe. I'd have to go back and double check.
Okay. So, not to be controversial, but so if we're hosting Music Alley and there until 8:00 PM, and are we asking people to park in the municipal parking lot and pay for two hours during the, during the music then?
Potentially, if there are no parking available on the common, around the common, potentially, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, Mr. Souza?
No, I was just wondering out loud, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, because I was looking into that same question about the parking. Music Alley is one, and businesses downtown are concerned, very concerned. They're concerned about students parking in front of their businesses when they go to classes for three, four, or five hours. Is that going to be properly policed? And is that going to be kept under control? Or is this going to wipe out their business? They're concerned.
That's a great question, and I can tell you that we'll be very vigilant in patrolling and making sure that people don't park in the common. The common, we're not doing any paid parking program in the common, but there is a time limit in the common, and we'll enforce that time limit.
Okay, may I, I drove by there yesterday to check it out, and not every space has the time sign on it, so we're going to have to improve that, make sure that every one, it's not a handicap accessible parking spot, has a time limit sign in front of it.
On the common side?
On the common side.
We'll take a look.
Okay, Mr. George.
Through you to the Town Manager. So there was an auction, I think, last week. Any update on how that went?
Yes, I apologize. I should have mentioned that in my lengthy Town Manager's Report. We sold basically two significant properties and then a handful of sort of smaller properties, and we received a total of 200, just shy of $250,000. We sold, I don't remember the exact amounts, but the house on Plain Street that was in, had been in tax title and we foreclosed, and then also the house that the town took and then tore down on Bedford Street, if you recall. That one, roughly $70,000, and I think the one on Plain Street was roughly $150,000. But I can certainly get the exact numbers, and then there were some other properties that sold for lesser amounts.
Okay, and where do those funds go to?
Those funds will come back.
I'll have to, general fund.
Could I maybe help out?
You can try, yeah. Go ahead. Two cents.
So we've already appropriated and taken into revenue all of the taxes that we ever should have collected from those properties, correct?
Correct.
So we've already spent the money, and now, so we have, we have an asset on the books, if you will, that we're owed that money. And so when we sold it, then the asset goes away and the cash comes in, and so it goes to the general fund.
Right.
But we've already spent all that money years and years ago when they didn't pay their taxes to begin with.
But is there a net gain on the asset?
So what was outstanding on the tax title?
Correct, versus what the property was sold for.
There was no, I can tell you, there was almost certainly no net gain on the Bedford Street property because of what we had to spend to rip the house down. Plain Street property, I can find out what the outstanding was.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for dispositioning assets in that case. That is not going to benefit the town, but I think we need to make sure that people understand where the proceeds went, what was the net gain, you know, I just think for the edification of the public.
And to my point, if I can just follow up, that should probably really go to like a one-time revenue type of a, a fund that we have, so I think it's important that the Town Manager does follow up with that. I'm agreeing pretty much with what Mr. George said, if no one can tell. I do have, I do have one suggestion, if I may, on the School Building Committee. It's becoming, after our last meeting, where we shuffled some things around and learned some things, such as the repair option may in fact be reimbursable from the state, whereas we had been told we were not, that it was categorically not reimbursable. Now, it may be that it might, and I'd suggest to you to reach out to the rest of the council. I don't want to have a discussion about it here because I didn't put on the agenda or anything like that, but reach out and, because ultimately, it's the town of Bridgewater's money, depending, I don't think it really matters what the legal course of who signs papers is because we, as a town, have to vote for it. And actually, let me just back up and say, I apologize to everybody who I created the false impression in last meeting that the repair was not reimbursable. That was what I was told. I was told something different at our last meeting, so I still have a lot to process around that. However, that being said, it might behoove the council as a whole to have the OPM in, and perhaps even a joint meeting with the School Building Committee if they wanted to be here, so that the council could hear and ask questions from the town's perspective and give an audience to all of the issues that we've been dealing with minutia of for months and months now, but I don't feel like a lot of people have delved into it. And, you know, if we're trying to file something by February 20th, that feels awful fast, so we should probably think about asking that. And so I'd just suggest you work with the president to see if that makes sense, to have the OPM come in and give a higher level presentation than, you know, the deep in the weeds that the building committee's on, but just where we are and hear questions from the council about things about Bridgewater. I think it would be very helpful in actually communicating out from them to the rest of the town. Just my two cents, so. That's all.
Thank you, Tim. Other questions for the Town Manager regarding his report, seeing none?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. McCollum.
I'd want to go back to the parking issue. I remember at one point when the police chief was here, and we were talking about enforcement of motor vehicle laws stopping for pedestrians, I guess it was, and he expressed, seemed, as I recall, he expressed a concern that in order to enforce those sorts of laws, he'd need to take his staff off other priorities. And I think he pointed out that, you know, that I suggested that perhaps the fines that we levy might more than make up for the labor costs, essentially, of enforcing those laws. And he pointed out that he doesn't see that, that revenue. It's not, it's not like an enterprise account by any means. So I'm wondering, currently, the Police Department is the only staff that enforces motor vehicle laws or parking laws, right? And I imagine some other towns have other enforcement mechanisms for parking at least. So I'm wondering if that's something we might think about. I mean, because we're kind of putting the chief in a tough spot. It's kind of an unfunded mandate in a way to kind of tell him to put someone from his department on that duty when he might see other priorities. So is that something we might, perhaps we should bring to the council for discussion or something you might look into and offer some insight on that?
Nope, that's a great point, and I think we've been, the chief, I've had, we've obviously had lots of meetings on this and the implementation of this, and he's, you know, comfortable, you know, doing the enforcement as they do now, so it's not a significant change from what they're actually doing now. And actually, with the technology, it makes it a little easier for the respective officers to actually do the enforcement, so that's the good part. I think the second part is that we're going to see how this works. You know, this is obviously new for all of us, so we're going to see how this works. If it ends up being something that we really need to spend more man-hours enforcing, people hours enforcing, then we'll regroup and look at possibly hiring, you know, just somebody to do traffic enforcement, which would potentially have to be a full-time, essentially a full-time job, but would probably be something less expensive than a full-time officer, obviously.
Right. When Mr. Gallagher was talking about this earlier, he kind of suggested that perhaps some, imagine you could contract with a private corporation to do the enforcement, and you could, I imagine you could even kind of build in some sort of incentive for enforcement, right? You don't want, you want to make sure they don't go overboard, but I'm wondering if that, is that something you looked at at some point, or as opposed to the flat fee?
Yep, we've looked at, you know, initially, we haven't, as I say, we want to see how it works first, but we're looking at both private option and also an employee option. Wouldn't be a uniformed, well, be uniformed, but wouldn't be an officer, would simply be parking enforcement. So the chief, you'll see coming up at your next meeting, the chief is, he budgeted this year, but now he needs some special legislation to incorporate a, this went right out of my head, cadet program, thank you, a cadet program. So, you know, next year or the year after, there's the possibility that he can use the cadets to be able to do some additional traffic enforcement.
And not necessarily someone with a gun writing parking tickets, right? Thank you.
Through you to the Town Manager. With Mr. Souza bringing up the potential issue with parking in the common, have we reached out to BSU, probably Susan McCombe, to ask them to notify the undergraduates? So they've sent out, okay.
Actually, BSU has been very good. They've sent out, you know, just simple reminders that the program is coming. Our contractor is actually, has created a very good instruction sheet, and we're going to give that to BSU, and they'll email that out to all of their students and their staff and visitors and so forth.
All right, great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. No more discussions. Okay, committee reports. Public Safety Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. I wanted to put this out to the full council and both Mr. Chase and I wanted to put this out to the full council and both Mr. Chase and Mr. George agreed on this, that we hear it in the full council and we hear it amongst, on TV so that folks can review it and it's, you know, really more widely disseminated than just, pardon me, the typical, oh, we met and we did this. So, here is our report. This fall, the Public Safety Committee has met three times to review the pressing public safety needs in the town. It's our desire tonight to report to you, the council, and to the citizens of Bridgewater on the important needs the town has in these areas. We want to make very clear that this report is not a report on what we can afford to do with the resources we have. That's an undertaking for the town manager, his finance team, our budget and finance committee, and the town's finance committee to sort out. Rather, we approached this report as trying to hear from some of the critical town departments in terms of public safety and where they need to be in terms of staffing, equipment, facilities, and infrastructure. We focused on the biggest needs of each department to bring forward to you this evening. The police department is understaffed compared to similarly situated communities in the state. Ideally, we would get the number of officers up to 52 from their current level of 42. This is the police department's biggest and most urgent need. A few things about this to apply some proper context. This is a town-driven issue, not so much a university-driven issue. The university's draw on department resources has been pretty consistent for years. It's an issue, rather, driven by an increasing amount of calls for mental health and substance abuse issues within the residents and the folks who visit Bridgewater. It's not an issue we can wave a wand at and fix right away. This is so for a couple of reasons. Even after hiring a potential officer, they have to go through an academy and that takes several months. There's an on-the-job training aspect to bring on a new officer so that that officer will not be fully up to speed. But most importantly, the hardest job is selecting the appropriate candidate. The chief has stressed this over and over. Getting officers who fit in the department and become solid police officers is his most challenging task and one he takes very seriously. In other words, he would rather turn down three potential officers to get the right one rather than hire the first person to come along in order to have a warm body on the spot. It's the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee that the town council, in conjunction with the town manager, adopt a strategy to fully fund the police department to their needed level of staffing over the next three years. The fire department is staffed at the appropriate levels. What is desperately needed and has been for a long while is a fire station to replace the aging downtown station. This will require significant planning and be a large capital outlay for the town. I believe the town manager and finance director have laid out the potential timing and ballpark costs in their capital plan proposals we have seen. The council should take the lead in advocating for this. It will undoubtedly require a debt exclusion vote to build this. Finally, and most importantly, moving into public works. Although this may not sound like a Public Safety Committee concern, from our point of view, we thought it was. We thought this for a couple of reasons. Ensuring we have passable roads in the winter is vital for the police and fire departments to respond in timely and appropriate fashion to any calls that they need to respond to and ensuring the roads we drive on every day are safe and passable. With that in mind, the most critical issues facing public works as regard to safety are three things. Improving the fleet of vehicles the department has access to. Today, we are cannibalizing parts from one broken truck to repair another. We need to implement a program that systematically keeps the fleet up to date so that it is able to do the jobs required to keep our roads safe and passable. It's the Public Safety Committee's recommendation that the town council work with the town manager, his finance team, the budget and finance committee of this council, and the town's finance committee to draft this program and work on implementing it. Staffing in this department was greatly diminished over the years as other spending priorities were met by cutting this department's funding. This is a trend that needs to reverse. Staffed as they are today, the department can only be reactive to situations where a threat to public safety has already occurred. This department needs to be out identifying issues before they affect public safety and the only way to get this done is to staff and provide other resources in an appropriate manner. Finally, we all recall the video we saw a few council meetings ago showing the state of our drainage systems. This is creating conditions for potential road failures throughout town. This would impact public safety in numerous ways. Obviously, if there's anyone driving on a road that fails, they could potentially be injured or their car damaged. Impassable roads create response time delays for police and fire vehicles, potentially costing precious time in responding to an emergency situation. For these reasons, the Public Safety Committee recommends the town council and town manager, with all deliberate speed, adopt a plan to address this situation and begin to fund it so that we can start to alleviate this situation across town. I'd turn it to Mr. George and then Mr. Chase for any further comments on their own. We came up with this as a committee, so this is our report.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Mr. Fitzgibbons. This is us just painting a big picture of needs looking down the road, you know, five, 10 years down the road from now. I think in some of the discussions I've had with other people involved in other things, I think it's important and they've very much appreciated the fact that we can give them a little bit of a larger scope of everyone is very concerned and rightfully so of the things that they're involved in, but we've got to look at everything. And it does give perspective on how people are going to approach certain things, you know, with the understanding that it is just a lot going on. There's a lot of needs here and these needs are not wants. From my perspective, they're necessities. Now, depending on when we, if and when we can acquire them or attain them, is up for further discussion, but at least with this document, and I want to thank Mr. Fitzgibbons and also Mr. Chase, to have this, to be able to put in front of people, I think is very important as well.
I would just like to add that over the course of the meetings that we had conducted with respect to those issues, we were presented with, I think, very compelling testimony from the department chiefs with respect to these important safety concerns, police, fire, and public works. I think that collectively, I think that the committee chose to emphasize the importance of the infrastructure, if you will, component of our recommendation as that which might be most appropriate to pursue first, really given the fact that the other public safety issues, certainly the fire station, certainly the full personnel complement of the police department, very important needs, absolutely, but those items are going to take a considerable amount of planning for obvious reasons. But we know right now and we know that through the course of the next few months, our roads are going to continue to deteriorate. You know, we saw some very graphic presentation with respect to drainage failures and potential drainage failures here some weeks ago. And really, that was the, that's really what prompted us to elevate the importance of the infrastructure issues in putting together the report that Councilor Fitzgibbons has presented tonight.
So, that's our report. There's no need for discussion.
No, no need for discussion. Great report, thank you for that.
Can I make a comment?
A comment from Mr. Colombo, yes.
I think there's a great precedent. I mean, most committees don't really produce reports like this and I think this is something we should all be doing more often, so I applaud you for taking the initiative.
Aspirations.
One other element I think we might want to consider in terms of public safety is pedestrian safety. I know, just trolling the Bridgewater Facebook page, you see parents concerned about kids walking to school. I guess it's a, is it a mile and a half before you can qualify for the free bus? And so, a lot of kids do walk to school and I know my own kids crossed Bedford Street to get to both the Williams and to the high school and that can be rough at 7:35 in the morning or whatever it is. Some, I would love it if you guys would take a look at that element of public safety also and perhaps
We'll definitely take that under advisement.
Once again, that was a really great report. I agree with Mr. Colombo. All right, that brings us to legislation for action. Resolution FY19002 for fiscal year 2020 budget resolution.
Before we actually make a motion on that, we need to have an administrative motion. The motion a couple of weeks ago was sent to both the budget and finance committee and the finance committee and it should not have been sent to the finance committee because it's in the domain of the council. So, I'd like to make a, so according to the Roberts rules, in order for us to vote on the measure and the proposed amendment tonight, we need to discharge the finance committee of council resolution, RFY19002, FY2020 budget finance, budget resolution. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thanks. Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget policy guidelines under fiscal year 2019 002 resolution.
As amended.
We'll get to the amendment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Wood.
Now, I'd like to make amendment to strike the fifth portion of this and if I can consult with my colleagues on the budget and finance, I think we intended to also strike the town manager budget objectives on the last page with the intention that that entire section be taken up by the strategic planning committee as part of their ongoing work to create goals for the town manager and not as part of the resolution. So, the, sorry, the amendment is to strike the section five and the town manager's budget objectives below that.
Second. So, motion made to basically strike the last page here, section five and then the 2020 management objectives made and seconded by Mr. Souza. Any other discussion on that, opposed amendment? Hearing, seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you.
Finally, back to the main, if I can. So, the budget and finance met several times on this resolution. It's been before the council now for a couple of readings. The budget and finance committee voted 3-0 with that amendment to recommend this to the full council. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Through you to Mr. Wood. What, how has this document changed from last time we approved it?
Well, so, that's a very good question, Mr. Colombo. So, we actually did a lot of work ahead of time before the first reading and it is a little bit different than last year, which was more in general and significantly different than years ago when we were very specific about percentages of known revenue coming into the town to act as our formation of a budget base. So, this is more a guideline. We have, as I said in prior meetings, substantially met our goal of, for our strategy about the, I'm sorry, the stabilization account and we have created other capital stabilization accounts and funded those in an appropriate way. You've seen that in free cash policy and that sort of thing. So, the initial goal back 10 years ago when we didn't have a good policy and didn't have a strong stabilization account, we've gotten past that. So, this is a change in that light and rather than picking 85% of this or 95% of this, there's segments in here talking about a target for unreserved fund balance, which is one of the key strategic shifts in this policy.
But looks at it from the demand side more than the supply side.
It does, it does. So, what this does is it assumes that we're going to have a certain amount of revenue to spend and then we're going to use a slice of that in, to reserve for free cash and that free cash will then become part of our policy, which we already have in place for free cash allocation, which then funds the capital stabilizations. And that comes into play because the budget and finance committee was just talking about one point that Mr. Fitzgibbons was making tonight and we were looking at capital items for the highway department. So, now finance has a good five to seven-year look at capital items. We've asked and there will probably be produced a fleet list because we're in the process, you'll see it coming up, coming back. We're in the process of looking at replacing a truck that's from 1998. So, basically, it doesn't have any floorboards. And I raised the question, how many other trucks do we have, which goes back to the Public Safety Committee's report, which is we need a strategy around our fleet replacement and management as well as personnel, that sort of thing. So, this is the significant change there as well as some other, you know, objectives about the revenue and solvency and things like that.
Does that answer your question?
It does. And can I just point out that after we passed our last budget, which had, was based on these percentages of revenue estimates, so it kind of constrained how much we could budget for services, right? And so, we found ourselves with good numbers coming up, revenues were higher than we had expected and so we were unable to, had some excess cash or anticipated free cash, were unable to budget that money to the schools and the highways, which we saw as a dire need. And Mr. George very astutely pointed out that we kind of hamstrung ourselves by being very conservative and at that time, it makes sense. So, I'm glad to see that you've made that adjustment, to see that our rainy day fund essentially is much more, at a much better level than it was and so we can kind of take off that, you know, automatic choke off of revenue supply. So, I'm glad to see that.
I also, if I may.
You may.
I also encourage anybody to look at the forecasting models that we're using now, forecasting excise tax, for example, out a number of years, knowing how many automobiles are being leased versus bought. So, what's going to happen is if we have a downturn in the economy, those numbers will probably forecast a downturn. We can't expect as much excise tax. This year was a bonus year. It was a bonus year in a couple of other spots. When those bonus years start falling a bit, hopefully this policy carries us through that without having to tap into reserve, but the projection in the first part of the budget process coming in is how much revenue do we expect for the next fiscal year? And so, this lines us up with that as do the forecast models.
Up, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
If I may, just to follow up on Mr. Wood's point and maybe ask him a question, if I might. Essentially, where we've gotten to with our forecast models is we have a pretty good idea, long-term trend on how revenue is going to grow and it's somewhere between 3% to 3.5% a year, somewhere in there. In the bad years, it goes down quite a bit and in the good years, it's a bit better than that. And so, the goal with the stabilization fund that we have and on the other stabilization funds we have is to be able to continue to budget to a 3% to 3.5% gross revenue increase year over year, carry it through those years, carry through all of the personnel, all of the expenses that we engage in through the down years and then put money away in the up years. Is that kind of the theory that's going on?
That is, that is very close to the theory that's going on, yeah. It's, the forecast is, in the past, we've never had these capital stabilizations. So, if you recall, every time, when the boiler went out in one of the schools, we essentially had to move money. Now, we have planned money for maintenance of school buildings and actions like that. In the up years, you write on the percentages, it's somewhere around 3% to 3.5% and that's what the forecast model will allow us to look at, is we can predict if it's going to be 3.3% or if it's going to be 3.6% or something else. Not 100% accurate by any means because you never know, but there's large chunks of our revenue streams that are fairly accurate, such as the levy. And you heard earlier today about the auction, so we had part of the levies, people that weren't paying taxes. But there's also, and I encourage everybody to look at the whole budget process, there's also pieces of the budget that are unknown. So, we don't know right now how many students will go to BP, but we know that for every student that goes So you, you see those numbers start to develop later in the budget season, budget process, but the large amount of revenues, you understand, and then you start calculating in the projected expenses, and that's what brings it all together. But this, this policy, I think, closes the gap, as Mr. George pointed out, you know, so that if we can anticipate a little bit better what our, what our, what our revenues that are, tend to fluctuate, like excise tax and others, our forecast models do get closer to that.
Excellent. Are there any other questions? All right, so it's time to say, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Wood and team. Wraps up. That moves us to old business. Seeing none, we move to new business for Order FY19037, acceptance of a one-time revenue for American Tower.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Second. Motion made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? And we move to citizens' comments. Seeing none, literally seeing no citizens. Move to council comments.
Okay, first of all, everybody, happy holidays and happy holidays to my colleagues on the council. And yes, today, baby, it was cold outside. And make sure you check on your elderly neighbors and people who are in conditions that might be necessary to do that. That's important, and I, I encourage that. And just to pick up on something Mr. Colomodos has talked about a couple of times this, this evening, pedestrian safety and, and police enforcement. The, there was a police cruiser out today at the corner of Crescent and South Street, making sure that people understood that, yes, 20, 25 years ago, we changed that yield sign to a stop, and you needed to stop there, and they were doing a great job making sure that folks actually did that, and that's in my precinct. So I certainly appreciate the efforts to make sure people are stopping for that crosswalk there and following traffic safety laws. Thank you.
Mr. Loach?
Happy holidays. Happy New Year. Happy birthday to me.
Today?
Christmas Eve.
Really? Mr. George?
Just a couple of things. On Saturday, I was able to go to Lucini Transportation's open house of the new facility on Elm Street. Very impressive. Also, very exciting to see a company put in a significant investment on the Elm Street area. So I know we have a lot of things going on, we've got, we've got a lot of needs there, but it was good to, to walk around and see a brand-new facility, very extensive. So I, I appreciate their commitment to the town and, and also kind of getting ahead of it with the understanding that we are going to, you know, take care of the road and things of that nature. So I just wanted to say that was great. Merry holidays to everyone. Be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
I would just add my own wishes for a merry holiday season to everyone. I hope that, I hope that our current cold snap ends very quickly. We've had a reasonably, I think it's safe to say, a reasonably snow-free winter thus far, so I hope that trend continues as well. And I do wish everyone just a terrific holiday time with your friends and family.
Mr. Gallagher?
I want to thank the town manager for, for reaching out to the Boston Architectural College to help us here in town with the refurbishing and redesigning of the World War I memorial in the center, in the center of town, and not just that, but, you know, reinventing or re, you know, redefining our town common to some extent. And, and they made, three of the students had a, an architectural drawing of what they'd like to see, and, and will decide on which one is feasible for, for the town when we meet, when we meet next. I think they did a very, they had a great presentation, very professional, and, and they took the time to learn about the town, not just draw something, but to learn a little bit about the town and, and what we're all about, so they, they did a very good job. I want to wish my colleagues and everybody out there a happy holiday season, and we will see you on January 8th.
Mr. Wood? Is that the next one?
All right. Well, I'll echo happy holidays, happy New Year, everything like that, and double what Mr. Fitzgibbons said about checking on your neighbors. This time of year also is a, a lot of effort for people that don't have a lot of family or, or in difficult situations. So, you know, watch out for people that also that, that might need an extra boost and extra hand, or a reminder about, you know, neighbors that don't get out a lot, just, you know, maybe a card or call or something else would be, help them through the holidays as well. Thanks.
Mr. Colomodos?
I want to wish everyone a happy holidays. And I also want to express appreciation for the work of the Budget and Finance Committee with all the budget work. If you look back where we were 10 or even five years ago, we just did, did things just not nearly as professionally or thoughtfully or efficiently as we do now, and I think we're making a lot of progress on a lot of fronts with the town-wide planning, wayfinding, all sorts of things. And I think, I'm really optimistic that all this will kind of come together and provide results that we can all see and appreciate. So thanks, everyone, for their help.
Mr. Sousa?
I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and especially a safe holiday season. I know at this time of year, we all get together with family and friends, and that kind of makes it merry and we have a good time, but we always have to remember when we get into our cars, make sure we have a safe driver behind the wheel.
Thank you. And I'll close with, obviously, happy holidays. You know, we talk about safety, talk about helping some elderly folks and those that might be having trouble, or also those who are having maybe some struggles internally. So in the stressful time of the holidays, make sure you smile to people because a smile can save a life. So that's really important, so reach out in that way as well. Something that was mentioned maybe a few times throughout the, the meeting today is, you know, we discussed about image and, and marketing of the town, and, and within those conversations, many discussions about or references to some of the, the projects we have, there's a lot of plates spinning in Bridgewater. There's a lot of great stuff happening in Bridgewater. There's a lot of planning that's behind it that Mr. Colomodos referenced and that we all spoke about as well. And it's a, it's great to be a part of it and to have a nice visualization of where we can be if we work together as a council, as leaders in the town, and of course, as folks at home that listen and show up on occasion. And we can all make this place a, a better place to live, not just Bridgewater, though, the whole, the whole place, the big ball, you know? Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. And with that, we close the meeting. We adjourn. We were going to vote for it. Anybody want to vote for it?
Are we going to executive session?
No, no executive session, I'm sorry, no executive session.
Adjourn.
Second. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought there was one.